Okay, guys, we're going to talk.
To order our City of Fairhope City Council work session agenda Monday, April 22nd, 2024. Hope everyone is doing well. First on the agenda is a presentation by Principal Angie Hall of Fairhope Middle School. And the mayor will say something and to introduce you.
Ms. Hall.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. We're so glad to have Ms. Hall here with us today. She's here to talk to us about Fairhope Middle School and what the three-mil tax district does for her school. This is, um, we've had almost every other principal here, and Ms. Hall, I think you might be the last one, Ms. Hall, yes, to talk about it. But we really wanted to have the, use this as a chance to educate folks about what that three-mil tax district's doing and all the great things that are happening in our schools. So hopefully people will not only see this now, but will, it'll be online for people, you know, who want to come back and watch it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good afternoon, everybody. Again, I'm Angie Hall, and I've brought my assistant principals, Kathryn Charette and Sean O'Connor, with us, and we are representing Fairhope Middle School. And we just come to thank the City of Fairhope, oh my gosh, for everything that y'all have done for us. I cannot say enough about how much your funding has helped Fairhope Middle School. And it has made us the number-one school in the county, I'm proud to say. And, uh, and we have been labeled the third middle school in the state of Alabama out of 246. And that's a lot of...
Right. Very good.
And that's a lot of because of what you guys have done for us. I live in Silver Hill, so I watch how Fairhope, the citizens of Fairhope, how they just value education. And I am just proud to be a part of Fairhope.
Very good. We're glad to have you, Ms. Hall.
Uh, our mission is to empower bold and honorable lifelong learners who strive for excellence, serve others, and find success. And that's us. And this is our data. If you can look, I have given everybody a book that my assistant principals have put together. And as you can see in our reading goals, we, I'm, you, you can figure this out yourself with our star. Star data is used to measure students' growth throughout the year. Students performing below benchmark participate in intervention classes. The intervention classes are the classes we use with the fun, funding we get from the City of Fairhope. And we are able to have several intervention teachers to help our children even more that's, that's struggling, our struggling students. This is just a form that we use to keep our star data, our students use to keep their star data on. And if you can see right here, Fairhope Middle School students performed above the county and state percent, uh, percentages in all content areas on the state summative assessment. If you can, I'll just go through that line. One, seventh grade English language, Fairhope Middle School, uh, we got 84%. Where Baldwin County has 57%, and Alabama, the state of Alabama, has 50%. And you can see, we, we score above Baldwin County and the state of Alabama on each area. So I think that's absolutely wonderful. This sort of chart shows it all right here. Local funding. This is our three-mil tax that y'all have provided for us, and we are so appreciative, again, I can't say that enough. But we have used this, these funds for intervention teachers, instructional aides, academic opportunity class, a social worker, and a professional, and our professional development. Our local funding, our intervention teachers, these teachers are able to serve students in small groups who have not met, met benchmark. That's our goal, is to try to meet benchmark or show growth when we take our A-CAP exams, or academic goals on state testing. These are our intervention teachers, these are our aides, these are the people who are in classes with our teachers, who serve as even extra help for those children who are having problems or not scoring at benchmark level. This is our academic opportunity. She is a teacher. Students are assigned to AO when they have multiple missing assignments due to absences or failing grades. This gives students an opportunity to work during the school day and have support. Academic opportunity has reduced our students' failure rate. So we are very grateful for our academic opportunity. Uh, this is our social worker. We have also been able to attain a social worker, which I wish everybody knew how much a middle school, middle schools really require and need a social worker, just like our high schools do. As Fairhope Middle School's full-time social worker, she provides direct support services to students, their families, staff, and administration. Her role is to help students identify and address problems that may be interfering with their educational success at Fairhope Middle School. And our professional development, we take, a lot of people don't think professional development is, is necessary. I think it's one of the most important things we can do for our teachers, because our subgroups at Fairhope Middle School who's not attaining that benchmark, they are my black and brown males. And so we send our teachers to these conferences for strategies on how to teach these students. And they come back and they use these strategies, and it, it brings it up. It may not bring, bring us all up to benchmark, but it brings it up, we show growth in what we do. So these are just the, the different things that we, uh, different professional developments that we go to. And this is some of the book studies that we do from the professional development. And that is our presentation.
All right.
Any questions?
Not, not a question. First of all, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burrell.
I'd like to see sometime, just no rush, just data maybe prior to the three-mil where the benchmarks were at.
Absolutely.
And then after, to show the impact of the three-mil.
Absolutely.
And you alluded to the fact that that was helping, but if we could see a before and after, or even a now, and then, you know, and then...
We can do it.
And next years, a side-by-side to show how it's making an impact.
We can do that. That's easy for me. I have that for you.
Yeah, I think we've done that before at some point.
We've done that before, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we have that information. Yep, yep. Yeah, the AO is good, Ms. Principal Hall. I, I did not know we were paying for AO. That's outstanding.
It is outstanding.
I mean, that's one of the hardest thing in the world as a, as a lifelong learning student, or a lifelong learner, is to when you miss out on something or a class...
I agree.
And you have to get it on your own, and now you got somebody to hold your hand and walk you through it, or to help you. You know, that's, that's, um, that's outstanding.
Lot of latchkey kids, so, you know, we've tried to use that time to help those children to...
Get organized.
Get organized and get settled like the other children who have their two, two-member family at home.
Right. That's awesome.
And Ms. Shepherd's a perfect person to do that.
She is a perfect person, yeah. She is a former principal, Ms. Fay Shepherd is.
Oh, perfect, yeah. All right, well, thank you, Principal.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you for your work today.
Thank you. Thank y'all so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate y'all.
All right, guys, that's a good start. All right. Agenda item number two is a discussion of an ordinance to establish a historic preservation commission in the city of Fairhope. This is something that we have talked about, and we have been making sure that this is something that we, as a, um, as a team, do not rush in any manner. There was no rush to get this done, because we want to make sure that we involve all of our constituents and, and our legal expertise and, um, and experience from our community to make sure that we're dotting all our i's and crossing all our t's. So, um, so here we are again, even though we've spoken about this agnostium, here we are again speaking about it and, um, and having some roundtable discussion on where we're going to go with our historic preservation, if we go anywhere. All right. So counsel, I'm going to open this up. Is there anybody from the historic preservation that's here today, by any chance? Very good. Ms. Mara, is that Ms. Mara? I can't see, I don't know who that is, but yes. Skip is here somewhere, I'm sure.
Mara, yeah.
Mara's here. Okay. Counsel, do you want to start out?
Certainly.
And kind of give us a little bit?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Good afternoon. Just want to kind of reflect for everybody on how we've, how we've gotten to where we are. Appreciate y'all's patience and collaboration with the committee. After discussions with several of, of the councilmen and hearing some of the concerns raised, both at a staff level as well as from the council, about concerns in, in the community, it became apparent to, to me that there was a lot of consternation about, I think we previously described as steps two and three of the process. And in kind of going back and recircling back to the primary goal of why we embarked and why council embarked on this in the first place, it was, uh, in a large part to get CLG status potentially with the city, to open up potential funding mechanisms for those that were interested on a voluntary basis of trying to work with the city and the committee to seek some sort of financial benefit or incentive. And so this ordinance really kind of focuses on the goal of establishing a commission. And in speaking with the committee, a large part of what their motivation was to begin with was education, education and outreach, and just getting the word out about preservation and the benefits, and helping the community along the way with, um, identifying opportunities potentially to consider preservation instead of an alternative. And so, put simply, this ordinance in its current version, I look back, and I think there's been six or seven different versions based on our multiple work sessions and discussions. But this version attempts to, and would establish and create the preservation commission, the historic preservation commission. Establish the qualifications and the membership details, which largely tracks Alabama law. The large concern that was repeatedly raised by both council and the public dealt with the actual designation of historic properties or historic districts, as well as the certificate of appropriateness process. This ordinance removes most of that language. And put simply and unequivocally, that, that process needs to be set forth in a new separate ordinance at the recommendation of the commission, subject to the discretion of council. And so if council decides it never wants to designate a property as historic, council will never enact an ordinance to establish that process, and that will never transpire. And I think that was a lot of the concern of, of hearing from the public about, um, regulation and what would be imposed on certain properties and districts without owners say so. And so quite simply, this ordinance is establishing the commission. I've spoken with Paige Thomas with the Alabama Historical Commission Office, and she has confirmed that, you know, I didn't, she didn't study it word-for-word, but basically the description was, based on the ordinance and its, and its parameters, it was sufficient for them to meet the goal of achieving CLG status, if that's something the city would like to pursue. And so with that in mind, that is the proposed ordinance for today. I will be candid, I don't know that I had a chance to send it to the committee, so I don't, I hope they've had the opportunity to review it, but I did not send this latest draft to them. My hope is they've had the opportunity to review it and, um, but for, for time's sake, for publication and notice, you know, that we're kind of trying to get this on the agenda, because obviously y'all have heard a lot about this, instead of trying to move it forward. Here to answer any questions, if there are any.
Yeah.
Councilman Ross.
Yeah, um, so to, to corroborate what Attorney Williams has said here, um, you know, when we started this, I guess this iteration of it with this council, I know it's been discussed numerous times, going back to our first term, and then I know in years prior. The goal, I think, this time around was to obtain that CLG status and to obtain, create a commission in order to attain that status, but also set up something that allowed educational opportunities for historic preservation, and to give us the opportunity to apply for grants and apply for funding and to, to offer those incentives to people who were interested in the opportunity to preserve historic structures. It, it was never intended to be something that we wanted to impose on those who were not interested in historic preservation. And I see some, some, some members in the crowd that, that we had a meeting with specifically on that exact issue. And, and so that conversation led to the review and the changes that Chris just talked about, about removing the districts, removing the language about the certificate of appropriateness. So that as the, as it exists today, there, it does not include the designation of, of a historic district. It would be, that would be something, if it was ever going to be done, would have to be done by a separate ordinance at a later time. And so I say that to say, we, we've heard the concerns, and obviously, I'm going to repeat something that I, I told some of you guys when we met, is anything that we do up here can be undone. You know, we want this to be reasonable and something that benefits everyone, but the next council or four councils down the road can completely change whatever we've done or create something completely new. And that's not something this council sitting here today can ever address. Unfortunately, those, those, that just is, those are the facts, and that, that's the way it is. So reminds everybody to vote responsibly. But, but we've tried to take all sides into consideration in coming up with the res, or the ordinance as it exists today. Because again, I think the, the goal from the very beginning was something that benefits everyone who is interested in that benefit without imposing any burden on anyone who is not. And I think where we are today is it does exactly that, so.
I guess, sure, I'll just add that, I think that that, you know, I think Councilman Robinson summed it up very nicely, and basically, my goal through this process was to get to a resolution where we're protecting property owners' rights, but, but providing a vehicle for possible funding for those that wish to do something historic, as well as maybe a funding source for some education and, and ability to just educate the public on, on the need and the benefit of, of these historic properties. And I, I think we did as, as good of a job as you can in trying to walk that line and appease both sides, so well, well done, everyone involved.
Anything? No? Okay.
I guess I'll stick my foot in my mouth and say, historic preservation ordinance is doing no preservation at all. I'm just, is it, what's the, I mean, is there a point in it? I mean...
Well, it does, it does, it does a lot without forcing it on anyone. I mean, it gives the opportunity to obtain grant funding, to continue to educate and further encourage people who are interested in historic preservation to do that. It allows the city to qualify for certain funding. It'll, it allows property owners through the CLG to obtain possibly tax incentives to preserve historic structure. So I mean, I think it has a lot of impact without being overly burdensome on those who are not particularly interested in participating.
Well, we...
I just think the question is, I just want to raise the question, just for, for some debate on it.
It's a great question. Councilman, phone.
Just making sure, you know, basically this ordinance is not forced anybody to do anything that they don't want to do.
Yeah.
They would like to do it, it's the availability of information or have you is there for them. What's the CG, what's the thing?
CLG.
CLG is there for it. So my main concern is, if I were a property owner and I had a historic building, and the city's telling me I've got a, I have to redo it under historic conditions, I would have a problem with that.
So I, I think this is the conundrum. This is the crux where we are right now, as far as trying to find a happy road. There's never going to be a utopic solution where everybody is going to be 100% happy. But what we don't want to do, and the reason that this thing has taken over 20 years or more, and we're still talking about it, is because it is a delicate matter, and it does have a lot to do with the rights of individuals, as opposed to anything that resembles any type of totalitarianism that this particular government is trying to impose on our constituents. So we take it seriously. We're going to continue to talk about it. But we're also going to listen to the people that are raising concerns about their property rights and see that we can mitigate some of those unintended consequences as much as we can. And I speak hopefully as a majority, as far as trying to mitigate some of those things that I've heard from, from the citizens in the community, even some people on, on this council, that, that actually live in a possible historical situation. So, you know, this first step, though, before we get too far down the line, I think we've done that in this first step. I think we've given ourselves, to answer Councilmember Burrell's question, I think we've given ourselves an opportunity to stay in the middle of the road while at the same time establishing some type of regulations, so that we, um, as a community can have some type of, um, control or opportunity to make decisions to protect things that we want to protect, when we want to protect them, without putting an undue burden on people that don't want anything to do with it. I think this is a start for that. What comes next, we'll consider, just as long as we consider this first step, to make sure that we can get it right. And I think that's, that's the biggest thing. It's not to rush anything into play. There's no hidden agenda here. What we're trying to do for some that actually believe in this particular preservation, we've had examples, and I've given several times the examples, of the Nancy Lewis property that I have fought tooth and nail to preserve, and I did not have the instrumentation or the tools to do such a thing. And I just think that was, and there's more in our town, not just that example, but I just think that's a perfect example of why you have such an ordinance in place, when you want to do something that's right, in my opinion, and you have the instrumentation to follow through with it. So it's not a historical preservation that's a zero sum. It actually has benefit in certain situations. And I think the way and the time that council, and this particular council, the legal council and the body, um, representation that has put into this, I think we've, we've taken our time to actually put an instrument in place that I think both sides, if they read it and do their due diligence, can adore and adopt in like-mindedness. That's my opinion. So with that being said, anybody from the historical preservation, do y'all want anything to say at this time or to speak upon? Please come up if you, if, you know...
Hi, my name is Mara Hunter, and I'm with the Historic Preservation Committee. And I very much appreciate you all coming to this work session, and I, we have not seen that latest iteration, but if it took in account feedback from people who are present, then we support that wholeheartedly, and we appreciate all your efforts. And I, I do want to re, or I want to emphasize that the goal that we're striving for is voluntary preservation. We are homeowners here, we want to make modifications that are appropriate for us as we age in place. And so we understand that historic preservation is not about restrictions, it's about opportunity. And so we're really trying to carve opportunities here. And to your question about what can we do with it? We can do so, so much. We, you know, the city can apply for brick-and-mortar grants that are only available to towns with the CLG status. That's actual money in the city's pocket. That saves us all money as taxpayers. Or it actually uses the taxpayer money that we could be sending somewhere else and brings it back home, so that's really relevant. The other thing that we could do is with the CLG status, we could apply for money that supports not just education, which is very important, but it also will help us facilitate grants for small business owners. There are a ton of grants for small business owners who decide to preserve their building and operate a business out of it. And those are very hard to identify if people don't read that literature constantly. And for anyone who's ever tried to apply for a state or federal grant, you know, that's a really burdensome process. And historic preservation has its own special literature. And so if we were able to fund a consultant, for example, using some of this CLG money, which it is for, we could operate some workshops periodically that help people fill out these applications. And that is a big bonus, and that is also good for, for business. Tourism, historical tourism is a big deal. A lot of people can make money off of that. We can capitalize on our historic heritage if we have the tools to do that, that this type of ordinance will provide. Something else that we have been doing, kind of, you know, we're a volunteer committee that we need more support for, is we have some very historic properties that want to get listed on the state and national register so that they are eligible for grants. And I'll just bring one example that many people here know about, and that is the Society of Friends Meeting House. That is over 100 years old. It's not on the state register, not even on the state register. There is a national park, which they're trying to do now, which we communicated with them about and are trying to support as we can. There is a National Park Service grant called Saving Sacred Places. That grant gives money to places of worship, to meeting houses, to churches, to synagogues, to everything. And we have a ton of historic stock in our religious buildings here in our community. And if we can help them through some of these support structures, get them registered, then they, then we can help them with grants. So there are all kinds of things that we can do. And I do understand that some people are concerned about what might come, but the point that I would make to everyone is we do not know what will come, period. You know, not just what our council will look like and what decisions they will make, but whether or not we get flattened by a hurricane, and, you know, that could happen. I hate, no. I'm going to walk that... I'm walking that back. I'm so sorry I said that out loud.
Don't be so, yeah, don't be so dark, Mara. You were doing fine.
Yeah, okay, I'm walking that back. How about this, we could get, um, lotteries or something wonderful like that. But we just don't know what will happen in future. And so I think if we spend too much time being afraid of the unknown, that that's not a productive use of energy. And everyone, I think, in this process between the committee, the commission, and the people that we've talked to, we, we do want to do what the public wants. And there are a substantial amount of public that want to see this in place, so they have the opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you.
Question for you, please. So can someone apply for a grant to improve their residence or business if they're not in a designated historical district, or if they're not in a structure that's been designated as historical?
To apply for a grant, their structure needs to be identified, to, to, to receive a grant. The structure needs to be listed in the state or national register. They do not need to be part of a district. And, yes, okay.
But they don't have to be on any list of the Historical Preservation Committee then?
Not on a local list.
On a local.
At the state level.
That's what I'm asking.
And the national level.
Not at a local level. And we would not have jurisdiction over someone who's, who's got a, a listed property, because the listing only matters if they decide to apply for incentives. Really, you know, you, people, the, the way the programs typically work, even if someone does take advantage of a tax incentive, they just have to maintain that structure for five years, and then they can make a change. So the, even at the federal level, the laws are much more flexible than most people realize. And some people have had experience with, I would call it draconian ordinances in towns like Georgetown or something like that, but that's not what, what the hundreds of historic committees across the country look like.
So you answered my question. Basically, if you, if we pass this so-called what Phase One, they are eligible. That's, yeah, I wanted to make sure you didn't have to go further than that to, to, to be able to fulfill the promises that were made.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mara. All right. Okay. Anything else on that, counsel? Anybody? Mayor? Okay, very good. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number three, which is a discussion of the City of Fairhope Employee Personnel Handbook Revision 2024. I think Ms. Hannah is here.
Hannah is here, but I'm going to preface her presentation. First, I just want to publicly thank Hannah for taking this on. This is something that's been a goal of mine for four years now, almost, to get this handbook redone. It had not been re, the handbook was from 2014. It had not been re, the handbook was from 2014. So, you can imagine how much has changed since then. There have been ordinances passed. There were amendments to the handbook that needed to be incorporated. A lot of legal things that needed to be changed. Hannah's done a great job with a summary for everybody. So, we have made this available to the leadership team. They're all aware of what's been going on. We've had subcommittee meetings, and Hannah will go through all that. But again, once y'all really pay attention, if there's something in there that you'd like more information on, please make time with Hannah or myself. We're happy to sit down with any of you once you go through the summaries if you have any additional questions.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, I think y'all all received a very brief summary. So, I've got one that's got a little bit more detail so I can kind of keep track of my thoughts. So, if y'all are okay with it, we can go through the summary. And if y'all want to dive in, if we have time, we can, or wait. Okay. So, the first chapter, Chapter One, the first major changes in Section D regarding employment for classified positions. This first section establishes that the request to fill a vacant position must be approved by the HR Director, Treasurer, and Mayor. Also establishes that applications will be quote unquote "active" for six months for civilian positions and 12 months for public safety. So, active means that there is an eligibility list, which can be revisited in order to fill additional vacancies of the same classification. So, for example, you've got a job posted, and you fill it, but then all of a sudden you have a second vacancy come up, and it's the same classification. If it's within that six or 12-month period, you can go back to that eligibility list, review your applications, rather than reposting the position. Or if that list is exhausted, you may repost the position. So, it just gives us an opportunity and some guidelines to go back to previously received applications. The section also establishes that the city complies with the Department of Homeland Security and E-Verify by confirming eligibility to work in the United States upon hire. Also establishes that the city is a drug-free and tobacco-free workplace. Section 1E talks about probationary employees, establishes that employees may use sick leave during their probationary period, establishes a six-month probationary period for civilian positions and a 12-month probationary period for sworn officers. I do have a note that that needs to also include our dispatchers as well as our corrections officers. So, essentially, anyone deemed public safety by the police department will have a 12-month new hire probationary period. Section 1F is reemployment of former employees, stating that if an employee is rehired within 180 days of separation, they may return to the same, they may return at the same relative pay rate, meaning the same grade, same rate, if that's the same position they're returning to, subject to any cost of living adjustments that may have been applied in the separation period. After the 180 days, if they're rehired, they're subjected to the kind of standard new hire pay rate. Also states that an employee will be considered a new employee for all purposes except any vestment vested retirement service with RSA, in which case we would just follow RSA rules. Section Two, the first one is on Wage and Salary Administration, stating that the mayor has final authority over offer rate for all newly newly hired employees, which will not exceed the midpoint of the assigned range. Also, she has the final authority over the offer rate for a promoted employee may exceed the midpoint of the assigned range, but should not exceed the maximum of the assigned range or the amount budgeted. Of course, the exception would be an appointed employee, in which case the council would be the one determining the salary. That section also confirms Ordinance 1635, which was also revised in Ordinance 1738, establishing additional pay opportunities for employees who obtain their CDL or specialized certification. We've clarified that this is only for our hourly or non-exempt employees, and it'll be effective on the first pay period following receipt or completion requirements. Also expands to include Marina staff is eligible to receive tips and required to report such income. 2B is attendance. So, this is just confirming the concept of the existing attendance policy, but it moves us to a 52-week look-back period rather than a calendar year. It's also moving to address unplanned absences rather than excused or unexcused absences. That's because the lack of planning an absence causes more of a hardship than whether or not they've got a doctor's excuse. It also establishes the determination of an excuse status is at the direction of the department head in consultation with the HR Director. So, it's just kind of tightening up that policy. 2C is work hours and time records. It's establishing that exempt personnel must advise designated employees of any absences so that time cards can be reflected accurately. This is just due to our software setup. 2D, breaks and lunch periods. It's establishing the responsibility of both the employee and the supervisor or department head to report an interrupted unpaid break to the payroll administrator so the notation may be entered on the time card. Also confirming Ordinance 1617, which establishes that certain hourly employees will have lunch breaks automatically deducted from their time cards, and it's the responsibility of the employee to report any interruptions of the unpaid break to their supervisor or department head. Section 2E is working before or after regular hours. This is a simple policy, which just is going to ensure consistency with best practices. 2F is concerning overtime. That's just concerning Ordinance 1573, establishing overtime practices. Section 2G is compensatory time. We are increasing the amount eligible to be earned to 64 hours for our employees who work 2,080 hours a year, such a 40-hour employee. And it's increasing the amount to 96 hours for our employees who work 2,184 hours per year. Let's see. 2H, this is a large revision to on-call and standby employees. It's revising Ordinance 1662, which establishes an on-call pay for designated employees. It's stating that, beginning October 2024, there will be a differentiation between on-call and standby designation for certain classifications or roles or departments within the city. It's confirming that employees on standby must reside within the police jurisdiction to ensure timely response. Also confirms the pay structure for employees on standby. They'll remain at eight hours of standby pay at a rate of one and a half times their base pay rate for each day on standby or the actual time worked, whichever is greater for weekend and holidays on on standby. It's also establishing a per diem of $100 per week for an employee who is placed on-call. And that employee is to be available, if needed, during non-business hours. Employees who are on-call and respond to a call during this timeframe will be paid for the actual time worked, and the pay will be in accordance with Policy 2I, which is Emergency Call-In. Moving to 2I, that's a revision, just to align with the previous policy. It will revise what was adopted in Ordinance 1662. Section 2J is Hurricane Operations Plans for City Employees. This was a new policy, which was adopted in Ordinance 1755. 2K is additional pay during weather emergencies. So, this is a new policy, so it's a little bit longer. This is going to establish the ability to apply administrative pay for a whole or partial day to employees who are directed not to report to work due to a declared emergency. It's also going to establish a premium pay rate for our exempt or salaried employees who are on duty during a declared emergency if those exempt staff are required to work an abnormal schedule. States that any work in an abnormal schedule be calculated at an hourly rate. That additional pay is capped at eight hours per 24-hour period. The mayor may also allow the exempt employee to accrue vacation time in lieu of additional pay, which will also be capped at eight hours per 24-hour period. Any additional vacation time must be used within 180 days of the emergency event. It also establishes a premium pay rate for non-exempt employees on duty during a declared emergency. No additional pay would be assigned if they were reported to alternative works, alternative work sites. But if they were doing their typical job, then they would receive additional pay. If working during their traditional role during the declared emergency, they'll be paid at one and a half times their base hourly rate for the duration of the regularly scheduled shift. If an employee works longer than the regularly scheduled shift, they'd be paid two times the base hourly rate for additional hours. Overtime will be determined based on their regular threshold, and the rate will be adjusted accordingly. Also establishes that an employee assigned to provide mutual aid to another agency will be paid in accordance with that agency's pay policies. It's important to note that each of the portions of this policy ensure FEMA reimbursement of wages during the declared emergency and during mutual aid. It's also going to provide incentives to employees to report to work as required during a declared emergency, and it's going to ensure that we remain competitive with other government utility agencies in the area. 2N is military leave pay. This is just new policy. It'll make sure we're in compliance with federal law, so it's pretty standard. 2O is pay periods and direct deposit. It's confirming Ordinance 1687, defining part-time employment, and establishes a look-back period to monitor part-time hours worked. Also establishes that direct deposit is mandatory for all pay periods. 2Q is a safe harbor policy. This is just a new policy establishing the good faith effort of the city to pay all employees in accordance with state and federal law. 2R is garnishments and levies, which is just a new policy establishing that we will garnish wages when directed. So, that's pretty standard. Section Three, the first section is equal employment opportunities. So, this is an expansion of our current policy. In the binder that you were all given, there is a sample of kind of what we're looking for in the redline version, but that's typed out in the clean version as well. It's expanding on protected classes to include pregnancy, childbirth, and other related medical conditions. It's also elaborating on forbidden types and forms of harassment and sexual harassment. It's also expanding on sexual harassment prohibitions and obligations of all employees. It's also finally expanding on the complaint and investigation procedures as well. Let's see. 3E is workplace violence prevention. This is a new policy to remain consistent with best practices. 3F is Americans with Disabilities Act. This is a new policy to remain compliant with federal regulations, as well as 3G, which is pregnancy nondiscrimination. 3H is our HIPAA policy. So, this is ensuring we're complying with federal regulations. 3J is Family and Medical Leave Act. So, it's expanding on our current policy to catch us up to federal regulations. It's also going to require an employee to use any available sick time accrued before using vacation or compensatory time during the approved leave period. 3K is whistleblower protection. The new policy will remain compliant with federal regulations. 3L is U.SERA, so that's Uniformed Services Employment Reemployment Rights Act. And that's just remain compliant with federal regulations as well. Section Four is the dress code. This is establishing examples of unprofessional clothing and fashion and gives employees outlines for casual Friday. 4E is work site standards, new policy to remain consistent with best practices. 4I is travel expense reimbursement. This is Ordinance 1739. We've got a couple of additions to tighten that one up. 4K, personal property, and 4L, use of city property are both new policies, just to make sure we're sticking with best practices. 4O is solicitation. So, this is just kind of tightening up the process for requesting to be on city premises for solicitation purposes. This is anything outside of traditional city business. 4P is implement weather. 4Q is cross-training. These are both just new policies to remain consistent with best practices. 4R is promotions. This is establishing a pay structure following promotion to job classification assigned to higher grade. It's giving us a pay structure that we don't currently have, stating that promotion pay will be 5% to 10% above the current rate of pay or the minimum of the new grade, whichever is greater, and that the pay must be approved by the mayor. It's also establishing that exceptions may be considered. Where an increase of more than 10% may be warranted, but that also must go through the mayor's, the final approval as well. Next section is 4T, transfers. This is establishing and defining that a transfer is a move between two classifications, which are assigned to the same pay grade. It's also confirming that the effective date of transfer must be at the beginning of a pay period, and establishes that an employee must provide a notice to their current department head. 4U is temporary assignment. So, this is allowing the mayor to temporarily assign employee to a vacant role in the city, which may also come with a temporary pay rate if the mayor feels it's appropriate based on the nature of the temporary assignment. Establishes that the additional temporary pay may be granted if the assignment will last longer than 15 consecutive working days. So, it's got some guidelines in there. Section Five is mostly related to our health insurance benefits. So, 5B, notice for individuals declining health coverage is revising in Ordinance 1691 and 1760. Identification cards, same thing, revising Ordinance 1691 and 1760, as well as our annual enrollment period and the benefit premiums and payroll deductions. 5H has to do with COBRA. So, this is establishing that HR will be the main point of contact for COBRA eligibility questions and confirms that the medical coverage at the group rate is not applicable to an employee who elects COBRA. Continuing on, these are just confirming or revising previously adopted ordinances to remain in compliance with federal regulations. So, I will not go through all of those, because that's pretty standard. Chapter Six, this one is starting to go into types of leave. So, the first provision is 6A, official holidays. It's revising Ordinance 1780, establishing there's an opportunity for employees to opt out of taking Mardi Gras as a holiday if they are assigned to work special events during the pay periods so as not to lose overtime opportunities. It's going to give them some regulations for requesting to essentially come into work and work Mardi Gras Day and to take that holiday on another day within six months of Mardi Gras Day. 6B is vacation leave, establishing that employees will be eligible to begin using accrued vacation time after completion of their new hire probationary period, rather than after 12 months of employment. This is something that'll just help us remain competitive with the local job market. Also establishing a new accrual rate for employees at six to 10 years of employment. This will also make sure we're competitive with other local agencies, and it provides incentives for employees to remain with the city during a crucial period of their tenure. It's hopefully going to reduce some turnover. Confirming no-vacation leave advances. It's also establishing a vacation buyback option, which will be on a quarterly basis. That section includes an eligibility requirement, timeframe for payroll processing, and conditions for buying it back. Let's see. Sick leave is the next section, confirming eligibility for employees who are still in their probationary status, meaning within the first six or 12 months, you can use your sick time. It's also expanding on general requirements to require a minimum of 30-minute notice to their supervisor for use of sick leave. And it states that after an exhaustion of accrued sick leave, vacation leave or time, it would be vacation leave or time without pay. Also expanding on requirements for extended use, stating that a medical report would be required if an employee is out for three days, and the employee may qualify for a family medical leave after three days of being on sick leave. Also establishing a definition of fraudulent use and requires use in one-hour increments. Bereavement leave, we are adding in step relations as qualifying as immediate family in 24 hours of bereavement leave. We're also changing it, rather than three days of bereavement leave, to 24 or eight-hour increments. That's a little bit easier for payroll when we're explaining it to our hourly employees. And then political leave of absence is also added in there. That is just establishing that an employee would have to take an unpaid leave of absence if they wish to run for political office. And that is just getting us in line with the Code of Alabama. Section Seven, these are types of separations, so pretty standard disability and death. This is just spelling it out so that we'll be in compliance with either federal regulations or best practices. I'm almost done. That was a lot of work.
You're doing, you're doing great. You can do it. Let's go.
Section Eight is progressive discipline procedures. So, we're renaming the first step in progressive discipline from verbal warning to employee counseling. This is just inconsistent, being consistent with best practices. Suspension without pay is another type of discipline. This is establishing that the department head will be able to determine the dates of suspension and provide, and it provides limitations for the length of time between the times approved by the mayor and the suspension. So, they can't wait six months to suspend someone without pay. The next, Section 8H, is limitations on disciplinary appeals. It's establishing limitations for appeals topics to only allow for appeal hearing for changes in employment status or pay rate, meaning they cannot appeal a write-up to the Personnel Board. It's got to be something that detrimentally affects their employment or pay rate. And then another section, which was removed, which was law enforcement PGOs, which are referenced are out of date and no longer used. Section Nine, ethical conduct is a new policy to remain in compliance with our state regulations. Same thing for statement of economic interest. 9D is secondary employment. This establishes guidelines for secondary employment or moonlighting. This is just to ensure that employment with the city remains a priority for our employees. 9E is nepotism. We're expanding on our current policy to establish limitations if relatives are to be employed by the city. We're also establishing a grandfather clause, since there are relationships which do exist, and a clause that allows an exception to be approved by the mayor. So, we don't want to hurt anyone who's currently working. Section 10, the main change is transitional duty. This is a new policy, which is going to help us remain consistent with best practices. It's also known as light duty. So, it's going to establish procedures and guidelines when considering transitional duty following an accident or injury which occurred on the job. Chapter 11, our drug and alcohol policy. This is expanding on existing guidelines, just to ensure we're remaining in compliance with our workers' compensation carrier requirements. And it's also going to ensure continued discount due to our drug and alcohol program. It's also establishing standards to remain in compliance with the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. So, the federal DOT sets regulations for both employers of pipeline workers and commercial drivers. So, we're going to make sure we're in compliance with those requirements. And then the next section on the Personnel Board, that was adopted in Ordinance 1573 and revised in Ordinance 1612. And then the last section is the use. And then the last section is the use of city vehicles. That's just expanding from our policy, which was adopted in ordinance sixteen eighteen. And then the assignment of vehicles just confirms the ordinance sixteen eighteen. And that's all. That's all.
Good job, Hannah. Well done. Very good.
So if y'all have questions, y'all can come find me.
We'll email you.
That works, too. Thank you.
I'm sure y'all are going to have questions about some of these. I can give you some specific examples of things that we've dealt with, which is why we've gone back and looked at some of the policies. I have some numbers for y'all, especially because I know we've talked about the on-call and standby pay a lot. I have some numbers for y'all that I can share with you, but would like to do that individually when you have time, and you have time to digest all this information. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel? Are y'all good? All right. Very good. We're going to move on. All right. Agenda item number four is committee updates. Councilman Burrell?
The rec board met last week, and it was a pretty short agenda. We did discuss the fact that our track is being used by multiple schools. And I had thought that we specifically wanted to prevent that. So, Mary, you look into that?
Yeah, we've already been discussing it.
And I think that we talked about fee schedules again, just to maybe make some recommendations on football field, maybe the track, and some other facilities. I think the swimming pools come up again.
It has.
So just, no specific recommendations on that, but just some general discussions on that.
Yeah. Councilman Conyers?
Yeah, and I'll add real quick to Councilman Burrell's discussion before I get to mine. I had a similar question about the track. I was at a meet, and I was a little confused about it. And then what it sounded like when I asked the coaches, that it was actually a joint, a joint meet that Fairhope did with someone else combined. So maybe that may answer part of the question that the group had.
It was.
But...
Yeah. It was a joint meet.
Yeah.
But we heard that most schools are having organized practice at the...
Well, this was actually a different, this was actually a fourth school. So that was a joint meet with high schools. So, yeah, we're aware of that.
Maybe that doesn't quite address what you were thinking.
No.
And then I'll say the library board met Monday last week. It had a large turnout, a lot of people engaged and coming to speak to the library. But everyone was polite and cordial and well-organized, meaning good to see a lot of tenants.
Councilman Burrell? I mean, Councilman Robinson?
I don't have anything else to add.
You want to do your...
No, I want to do a council comment.
Yeah, council comment. Okay. All right. Very good. So, yeah, but to add on to the, we're going to have to have, the mayor and the council will have to make some decisions as far as our recreation still, to make sure that we put some things in place for that track. There's a lot of things coming at us, because announced to many, we have now created a track that other people don't have.
That's right.
So, you know, and we're all about altruism, but at the same time, we do not want to take away from our kids that are in this community, and the taxpayers that pay for that track. So there's going to be some things that we have to discuss, and some fee structures that we have to put in place in order to maintain the use in wear and tear on that track that we're, that's headed towards us from other schools. Believe it or not, this is, I was talking to other people, this is a problem in other areas as well. As soon as one person builds a track, everybody wants to use it. You know, why not? I get it. But in those conversations with some of the athletic directors, they do charge those schools just for wear and tear, and to pay for that wear and tear on those tracks. So that's something that we're going to talk about. I don't have anything as far as committee meetings. Other than that, I visited with Jimmy in support to the library board, and it was very cordial. I must say, we, everybody acted accordingly as far as etiquette is concerned. And I think we got a lot out of it moving forward. And that's all I have. All right, guys. Department head updates. Let's get to the agenda.
Good afternoon. All right, so we'll start with number 15. And this was to award consolidated pipe for the pipe fittings and valves for treatment plant one. We did have three bids on this item.
Two bids. Very good.
Any questions on that one?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Number 16 is for the city council to approve the selection by the mayor for Krebs Engineering to tackle the project of restoring our treatment plant, number three, water tank.
I thought we, we never painted, this is another painting, or we, this is, which tank is this?
This is the one by the... Treatment Plant Three, the brand-new water treatment plant that we, that's actually currently online. It's the tank that's there. It needs to, it's in pretty rough shape. It needs to, it needs some rehab.
It's been in the budget a couple of years.
Yeah, it is a budgeted item.
It's been there a couple of years.
Yep, yep, yep. Perfect.
All right, number 17. So I wanted to provide you guys a visual. So this was a change order for the 24-inch water line that went from treatment plant three to the Walmart tank. So what we decided to do, instead of having a 90 to go right into the tank, we decided to put a T there with a stick of pipe and another valve, in case we need to do future expansion. It's already there. And while we had the ground already tore up, we wanted to kind of think ahead and think forward, that if we did want to expand west with a 24-inch, we could do that without tearing up the world again.
Yeah, just to make clear, we asked for this change order. This is not something the company came to us with. So this is ours. Good, yep. Thank you.
Yep. And number 18 is for not to exceed for Kimley Horn for the 181 sewer expansion. And it did come in under 10%.
Now, where are these lift stations going again for the public, Derek? Can you kind of...
Yes, so, so we've got a couple of different options when it comes up to the Fairhope Avenue side, and we're going to be working with Kimley Horn to come up with the best, best location for that to best serve that area. The other one is going to be towards the Gaineswood subdivision for the expansion of that subdivision.
Just south of 32.
Yeah, just south of 32.
South of 32.
Back towards Fairhope Ave?
No, this is south of County Road 32.
Yeah.
Okay. I got you. I thought I heard Fairhope Avenue in there somewhere.
Fairhope Ave, the second regional lift station will be at Fairhope Avenue.
There's going to be two. One up near Fairhope and 181. The other one's going to be just south of 32.
That's what I'm asking. Very good. That's the second one. Very good. Very good. All right. And this was budgeted as well, correct? Or is this a capital project?
No, this is another capital project.
Very good.
Any questions?
All right, thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Sorry, you're not done with me? I have number 20 on the agenda. This is requesting procurement of an employee assistance program from CompSite Corporation, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for an annual cost of $15,000. So, little history quickly. Employee assistance program is an employer-provided benefit that's typically billed at per employee per month. Initially, this was a request to, for the gas department to remain in compliance with their federal regulations as far as being a DOT employer. But considering it's pretty cost-efficient, we decided to go ahead and request to cover all employees under this benefit. So what it is, it just provides kind of a workplace-centric program addressing performance issues, which may be tied to maybe some mental health struggles that an employee might be having. They may be related to something at home, something at work. It offers them five covered sessions with a mental health provider. And after those five sessions, they assist them in transitioning if they need continued coverage with another mental health provider, either under their own health insurance or through a community mental health program. So the company that we are recommending is CompSite. This comes as a recommendation from Cobb Allen, our benefit consulting firm. $2.50 per employee per month. So it comes out to be around $13,500, but we've given ourselves a buffer since that PPM fluctuates per month, so.
And it'll be prior rated this year? Prior rated this year for...
Yes, it'll be prior rated for this year.
So this year, we're only paying the $6,000?
$6,250.
Yeah. Okay. So Hannah, do the employees, do they have any, any co-pay?
No, so this is, there's no cost to the employee for these five sessions. After the five sessions, they can help them transition to a provider if the employee's on our health insurance, to one of our providers, or they can help them find another provider in the area based on their needs. The key is that it also provides substance abuse counseling and referral services, which is a requirement for a DOT employer. So that's also a huge benefit to us.
And the people that they're going to see will be licensed providers?
Yes, that's correct.
That's right.
So this will be restricted to the gas department?
No. This is going to cover all employees.
Oh, I thought you said...
No, it started as a request from the gas department, because they have to offer an EAP, but...
Does that regulation...
That's correct.
So it does cover...
Covers all employees, full-time or part-time. Doesn't matter if they're enrolled in Blue Cross. Also covers all their household members.
Does it, does it, does it include the city council?
I think I did count you on my estimate.
I digress. Anyway. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we got, I got one item on the agenda, number 19, to approve a penetration testing from Warren Avery for the amount of $8,500. Just a yearly thing that we do, just to test the security of our defenses. We have, you know, several servers that are internet-facing, so we want to make sure that they are protected.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Any questions?
Nope. Got you.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I guess it's just for me. Since we pay this fee to them, and let's assume out of some strange coincidence, somebody does break in. Are they, do we, are we insured through them, or do they have a, is there some type of policy, other than oops, we flipped up there?
Well, yeah, so they're going to, they're going to point out any flaws or any mistakes that we have is up to us to correct it. And if we were to get, were we had attacked, then it probably will fall onto our cybersecurity insurance to cover that incident. They're just, they're just trying to basically highlight any glaring problems that we have that we need to address immediately. Yeah.
It just seems like in this field, whoever's the smartest, there's always next door. The guy's a little bit smarter. It's a shame it does that way. I just wonder how protected are we should something fail?
We try to, we just, we try to meet and exceed standards to try to stay protected as possible. I think we've done a pretty good job so far, knock on wood. We'll continue to, on that path.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah.
I'm knocking on wood here.
Yeah, please, Lord. All right. Counsel, anybody else? Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Questions from the only person who does not use email?
I know, right? Like, are you really concerned?
Just pointing that out. Just pointing it out.
The one thing he talk about.
I don't even think he has a computer, but he's asking questions about cybersecurity.
Is that EAP available soon?
I meant when I did say something, I was wrong. I'm trying to answer what I was going to say.
I wasn't sure, but I was going with it.
That's a good point, Mayor.
Good afternoon, counsel. I'm actually excited to be here, because there's actually three items that have been somewhat long time in the works. Item number nine, and it's, you know, this is not a complaint, it's an observation. Exactly two years ago, y'all authorized us to apply for this grant. And now, you are seeing this is authorized to mayor to execute the subaward grant agreement for a restore bucket two for water quality. And this is a complete inventory of our stormwater system. The deliverables will be in the form of a graphical information system, GIS. But the adage question that you always ask, and rightfully so every time we come to fix some corrugated metal pipe that has rusted out, is Councilman Robinson will, just how much is left out there? And I, my answer has been, we think it's a lot. This will answer that question. We'll be able to map every inlet and, and the runs between it. And part of, we based this grant application, the city of Mobile did a very early restore grant, and they, we got to go see what their deliverables were. And literally, this will be a pretty simple project. We'll be hiring a surveying engineering firm that will go out and literally pull the lids off of every inlet, every junction box, shoot the inverts for elevations, determine what's coming in the box, what's leasin', what's the material, what's the diameter, what's the shape, and everything else. So we'll end up with an actual map of our drainage system. And we do have 10 watersheds within our city limits. We will, we have them prioritized. The fruit and nut downtown are most important, because the good news is, when you get kind of east of 181, we have as-built drawings for what's been built there, so there's not as quite as a mystery. But we have quite a mystery here in the older part of town. So we're excited about that, and we're asking you to grant the mayor authority. This is a 75-25 cost-sharing, and that we do have the match budgeted and for that purpose when, when we finally get moving on this. But I'm excited about this, because it's just going to be a good tool for us, because we, Nicole and I attended a stormwater, countywide stormwater meeting the other day, and I felt better, because I had, had somebody describe, well, we've got an inventory of our outfalls, so we know where it goes. We just don't have a clue where it comes from, or how it gets there. And I'm kind of like, well, I'm not the only person in that boat. So that will be a big thing. Item number 10 is the next phase of master planning for the Flying Creek Nature Preserve. This will be the triangular-shaped track that is to the south. And a couple of noted things is that Thompson is teamed with the International Mountain Biking Association, IMBA. You've met them before. They did some initial work on behalf of us for that project, and they are a specialty company for off-road bicycle facilities. And we're asking you to approve that not to exceed them out, to get that design and planning going underway. Let's see, that was number 11.
That's your question, Matt, real quick?
Yes, sir.
That will be only one opportunity for that land? I mean, is it going to take up the entire property, and would there be any room for any other amenities there? I just don't think the mountain biking community consists of thousands of people, and that's a lot of land.
I think that's going to be guidance that you'll give them in part of that stakeholder meeting. You know, I appreciate enthusiasm, and our bicycle community has a lot of enthusiasm in this community. And so, you know, I'm sure they're going to be very engaged, but I think there's got to be limits set to everything, and that's going to be something we're going to look for y'all to give us guidance on.
So, yeah, so there, so Councilman Burrell, there's going to be a strategic, a strategic council, as up to 10 people that will be collected from the community, and then also be workshops, and that's all a part of what they're doing.
Thirty-six acres is a big chunk of our park. I'm not saying I don't want bike fans.
No, no, no. It's a great question.
Be exclusive use for that.
No, it's not. It's just that...
We can also talk about some passive trails around the perimeter, keep some of the biking internal, and possibly some other activities. Like doing the toddler bike area, where little kids can go right there, so it won't be all just like competitive mountain biking kind of stuff.
And it's 36 acres, so like you said, I mean, that's just one thing. I think we have a pretty good hold of what we're going to do. The rest of it will come together and kind of reach out to the public. There will be some online inquisitions as well.
Same thing we do with the Triangle.
Same thing we do with the Triangle.
Kind of like I said about the Marina, we had a whole bunch... Kind of like I said about the marina, we, we had a whole bunch of plans five or six years ago, we looked at and go, oh, we love it, let's do it.
We got plans for this as well?
Yeah, we sure did.
Okay.
Yeah, we, that's the same group. It's the same group that...
No, the bicycle group was on the northern part of the property at the time, and then the, it was a lake, and there was a little venue area is what it was. It was a venue, remember?
Well, let's pull it. I mean, I have no problem...
I remember the, the two things, I think I was thinking they were flip-flopped, that the bike was on this side and the, the, talking about like the tea room and all, all the...
Well, you know, I've heard everywhere, but town of alarms, a place to have weddings and things like that.
Right.
I'm not saying that we agreed with all that, but there were plans, a lot of plans.
Yeah, so if we have things that we've already kind of talked about previous to us being a part of this administration, I don't have, just like we did with the marina, pull them back out. I mean, let's dust them off.
Look, just what, what components of that would we consider?
Exactly. I mean, yeah, it's already out there.
If you go to the planning and that, it needs to be dusted off at a moment. There were a few components in there that were decent.
And were those master plans?
No, they were conceptual, and, and the MBA folks really liked the larger tract to the north. If you remember, that's kind of where they were, they really liked that. And if you kind of remember, I think the council's like, whoa, wait a minute, we, we can't take the biggest chunk of land and let it be sole use for bicycles. So, that was kind of, that kind of was what tempered where we are now, is looking at, hey, this is the passive side, this will be a little more active. And it will be planned. I mean, but, but I, I think you will see a lot of the concepts that they suggested just fit to that particular area. So, but yeah, that was, they would have, if, if the bicycle, I love the bicycle community, but they, they had taken all 107 acres if they could have, so...
Yeah, well, no, I mean, God bless them. But yeah, this is a master plan.
They're considered enthusiasts.
Very enthusiastic, yes.
So, yeah, this is a master plan, Councilman Ray, so I, I think, and we're reaching out like we do always, you know, for other ideas. But we have things, you know, that we've already talked about, let's dust them off, pull them back out again.
And we have, we have that conceptual.
Yeah.
And, and then probably item number 11, and, and it's the closest we've ever been. I think we got permission from a council in late fall of 2017 to apply for a grant, and then maybe extra year to funding agreement the next year in 2018. And here we are in April of 2024, recommending to award the bid to Rollins Construction on the Working Waterfront Project. And, you know, that is still very qualified, meaning that it's a step we need to make per the terms that we've all worked out with the additional funding from, from Restore. But I understand that there's still a review and approval process by Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources and the U.S. Treasury, as well as our city attorney as part of that step. So, we are, we are closest we've ever been to, to moving forward on this, and we are asking for affirmative recommendation from y'all on that resolution. And then another project that has moved faster than Restore, but still seems like it's been a long time in the work, is item number 13. We have spent a great deal of time with the design team. We have gone through entitlement with the Alabama Historic Commission. We have gone through the NEPA process. We have abated the building from, my mind just went blank, asbestos. And we are, we have revisited and returned this budget everywhere we can. And I think, I know there's been a lot of conversation, is we're asking now to be able to go back to EDA with an amendment of the scope of work that will describe what we've presented to you as far as the portions of the building that won't be saved, the portions that will be 100% saved. And I understand, you know, that the exterior, especially the furniture on Church Street, will be historically preserved. And, you know, it doesn't mean it won't get new windows, but there'll be windows that reflect the historic nature of the building, the doors, et cetera, roofs, materials and things of that nature. But we're asking for an additional $2 million to be funded toward the project. And I did put the kind of at-a-glance budget in the EDA format that we're kind of showing you what was originally approved, what we're asking for amended, and what's the difference. And at the end of the day, this works out to be about a 52.4 split between the city and the EDA grant. And I understand there's also another bucket of HUD dollars, which will come a little later to do additional projects on this site of 750, but that's not, can't be intermingled with this. It's funny that two federal organizations cannot work together, so they've got to be completely separate in the project process.
And we are asking for up to $2 million, not to exceed 2 million, but we are continuing to still search for funds through state and federal resources, still searching for funds, so we hope not to have to use that whole 2 million. My hope is that we could do, we'll have a million and get another million-dollar grant, which we're working on now.
And, and that is the biggest challenge, is we technically, we had dollars appropriated that was outside of the EDA grant for some master planning and some general architecture of the site as a whole. But we have, we now are prepared and can tell the architectural team to actually start designing the project which restores the building. But until we get through this, this funding and EDA scope of change, we cannot spend the EDA money that we have for that architect's work. So, this is a critical step for us because the mayor will have to provide a proof of where the additional fundings come from through form of a resolution, so that we hopefully can get their thumbs up and cut the architects loose and actually get this project moving forward, so.
Yeah, so, question. This money is proposed towards 2025, correct? What are we talking about?
Right, it'll be closer to 2025, correct?
In the budget of 2025.
Correct. So, we have the opportunity to budget for it next year. Right, but we need to go ahead and secure the funding so we can send a resolution to EDA, so they will approve our scope of work.
Or approve of where we're getting funded from, I got it.
That's correct. I just need to know that we have the funding.
Okay, on a different topic, and the council has brought this up several times since we're moving forward with this particular property. The K1 Center, as far as our, our theater, our performing arts, as far as kind of not getting too far one way or other with the master plan of all of this, are we thinking about that as well? I know at one point, we made sure that we weren't mixing dollars, but we were still going to continue to work towards the ideology or the vision of where we're going, so that it would fit like Lego sets when we're doing one thing towards another.
And here is, here is the best answer I can give you, that, and it's a good, it's good news answer, is as you know, we presented this council what, what we looked at schematically, what the building, the historical, original school footprint building by dealing with the, the gymnasium, as well as part of the South Wing, which also opened up the rest of campus for a future parking deck if needed, a, a performing arts center, and you saw several locations with that work. Well, the good news is we got through the Alabama Historic Commission, and we have gotten entitlement, and we've gotten approval for, for our conceptual of just what you saw, okay? So, that has all been preserved. There was a point in time where they were, we thought maybe it was going to be a hard no, and then that kind of changed how that campus would be master planned. So, right now, everything is set in motion for it to open that campus up for that, those concepts you saw in master plan. And what will happen is once we get this step done and we're starting on the building project, then that team will kind of pick back up and come back to you. You've got one more kind of pass-through on the total campus master planning to talk about. What area do you like best for the performing arts center? Where do you think parking should be and that kind of thing? Because you got to see several options when we first presented to you, so.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you.
Councilor Zon asked Mr. Johnson a question.
Yes, sir.
Richard, the, you know, if, if in fact, the breakdown, the funding breakdown winds up being, as you, as you have here, 52, 48, city, EDA, is all 15,000 square foot of renovated space dedicated to Hatch?
That is, that is still a step that you're going to get involved in, and because there's going to have to be a lease agreement. And so, but as the scope of work is written, is that, you know, the money that EDA is providing is deriving a collaborative workspace, incubator space for Hatch. But now that the city has a big chunk of that, I think that there's probably an ability for y'all to work that out. Where, the problem is, you just kind of, you can't fix just part of a building. Either you fix all the plumbing, you fix all the electric, you fix all the roof, and that's, that's the challenge that we're working in right now, so.
Yeah, but, you know, and I, look, I like Hatch. I mean, I want them to do well, but I don't know that they need 15,000 square foot, but if it's dedicated to them, and they can save what goes on that building, and we've spent the majority of the money, I might have an issue with that.
And that's why we're starting to actively work on lease agreement. Because we've got to get that, and we know we'd have to get that in place.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. That's not the entire agenda. Anybody want to come up? Not call.
All right, I have 21 for our contract with Pyro Productions for our turnkey 4th of July show. If y'all have any questions about that. And I, and I also want to, I'd be remiss if I, if I didn't say it, but tomorrow night, we're going to be honoring all of our citywide volunteers, as well as our, our Volunteer of the Year who sits in the audience, Ms. Catherine King. So, we're excited to have a night to celebrate her and all the other dedicated volunteers of the city, so.
Where, where, where is that?
That is here at Civic Center.
What time?
4:30 to 6 o'clock.
All right, very good. Tomorrow, which is the 23rd, 4 to 6 o'clock. We always... 4:30 to 6 o'clock?
Yeah. I misunderstood, I thought you said 4.
It'll be that third minute early.
Not a problem.
It won't be late. All right, go ahead.
I have number, number 12. This is going to be a agreement for mat rental service. And just to give you a little background, how this, how this started, we currently, right now, purchase mats, clean them ourselves. We ended a contract with Centos for uniforms. And so, at the end of, when we turned in majority of those uniforms, there was over $30,000 owed in non-return uniforms. Any of the uniforms they may have had in stock that had our logo on, we had to purchase those in this agreement. Last week, the gas department finished turning their, finished turning in their uniforms. That will bring that number down. And so, what Centos came to us to the table is if we would have an agreement of this 22,000 over a three-year period, that would wipe out that bill. So, it's, it's really a wash. It just gives us, we, we get a service out of it, I know.
Yeah.
Either we write them a check for the 22,000 for that service, or do this mat service.
Looks good on their books.
Yeah, and Marcus has spent a lot of times going through the agreement. There was a bunch of stuff in the agreement, but I wanted Marcus to make sure before we bring this to you, that he has ironed out everything in the agreement ahead of time.
I talked to Marcus, yep, we talked, so thank you, yep.
Do you have any questions on that?
Yeah, they signed in blood. All right, thank you, Kim. Very curious. All right.
Evening. We have one other grant that is also the Restore Council Bucket Two Water Quality. These two were funded, the Stormwater Inventory and the, and this one were funded at the same time. This is for 22 generators to be placed at 22 lift stations. So, those will be prioritized by Daryl and his crew, and the total amount for that is $820,000. And then again, because it is that, that water quality bucket, too, it's a 2575, so we, we do have our 278,000 and some change match.
This is, so, these things, these two water quality things, I know they seem like just dull things, but these two items on the agenda, we've been waiting for, for some years, and then we finally got them on the agenda two years ago, and now here we are two years later, finally authorizing or approving them. But these are huge for our community. For one, we've coming up like the Jeffersons. We're moving on up, as they say, you know, because, because we had old Curtis, and Curtis now, he knows where all the holes are, all the water lines and everything out, but we never had it documented for the first one. And now we have a GI system that's going to help us come to the, to the light as far as technology is concerned. And then this one, you know, with our history, you know, as far as SSOs, this is huge, you know.
Yeah.
So, so we're excited, I'm excited. I know that seems nerdy, but I'm excited about these two things because it's going to help our community as far as health and, and safety and the welfare tremendously, so. But I just want to give a little feedback because it's been so long since we talked about it, and I don't think people, just like a pass-through thing, and I just wanted to make sure that we understood what this was. When we're having storms, the generators were going off because we didn't have the amount of electricity to keep them running, and then we would have overflow. So, this would mitigate those type of instances and allow us not to have, hopefully, any SSOs or fewer SSOs.
No overflows into our bay.
Anyway.
Oh, I just ran this number the other day for, for mayor, but yeah, we have about $40 million in grants right now, so, yeah.
You paid your salary.
We got a lot.
Good job, girl.
I mean, wait, come on. Let's up that a little bit.
I digress, almost again, I gotta, my wife tells me I gotta watch my...
Yes, we have a lot of, we have a lot going on right now, and, and more coming, I feel like all the time, so.
God bless you. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am. All right, let's see, what we have, 13, 22, 23, we're missing ordinance, this is five, let's see, six, seven, eight. Okay. Ordinance, stop, historical, we did the, historical, we can, knew that, we already... Then eight is myself, okay. All right, so six is Mike, is six, Mike? He's here? You want to say anything? No, just, okay, very good. So, you're here to do it? Yep. And then seven, approval, acquisition approval, financial for service consultants.
It should say infirmary health systems on there. These bonds are for infirmary health systems. And all we're doing is agreeing and consenting that they can do the bonds to refinance other bonds and any other facilities that they're going to add on or build.
Yeah, this is, seven is a technicality as far as when we have huge projects, and it's a project that's going on in the city, and a bond is being offered by one of our entities. And so, this is allowing us to go forward, or allowing Mobile Infirmary to go forward with their process of receiving a bond for whatever project they have in store. We are not on the hook for any monies or any liabilities, is in the writing, when we agree to this particular Title 11, Chapter 62 Code of Alabama. Just want to make that clear. So, this is just technicalities of paperwork that we have to do. All right? Number eight is delegate, that's myself. I guess I'll be going to Huntsville for the voting for Alabama League for municipalities. We got to have, create a resolution per the league for me to do that. And I think that's it, guys. I think that's it, I think we covered all 11. All right, all right. We, it's already six, so we'll be back in about three minutes.